Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie Behringer. Paul Cuny. Joe Latte.
Here.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
Brian Peavy.
Here.
Carol Shannon.
Here.
Dave Thomas.
Here. Agenda is before you. Meeting agenda. There are no additions or corrections or questions. Acceptive as unanimous with unanimous consent. We also have an agenda in front of us. Anything to be taken out and discussed? If not, Chair recognizes motion. Motion made by Laraway to accept the consent or the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by PV. All in favor say aye.
Say aye.
All favor, all opposed say no. Motion carries. We got the. The. Planning Commission's new work on the. Master plan, that's the thing I'm trying to think of. The master plan and I. I have no, it's fabulous work. So everyone that's on the planning commission. We owe them. Great deal of thanks because this is the most complete. And distinct one we've ever had with all the graphics and with all the population shifts and everything else so. Thanks to Tim, Jessica, and the rest of the planning commission for putting that together. This is the most complete planning for. Master plan I've ever seen. So, thank you much. With that, Mr. Manager.
Just a few quick items touched base on tonight, dredging work is underway. That was the opening slide. They're working their way up the river. They have to be done obviously by October fifteenth, so another month at least both to it that they'll be working. The planning commission in addition to recommending a draft master plan to you for your review. Has begun work on looking at what is called cottage food operations. And there's a provision in Michigan law that if you are under twenty-five thousand in gross sales that. The end of the day you can. Set up like a small shop and not have to go through the Michigan Department of Agriculture regulations on. Inspections and that kind of stuff provided that you're selling specific type of goods so. We had a request coming in someone was interested. There's. Where you're core in the area, area loosely of like this side of the county that I'm aware of so. They started looking at that. So at their next meeting, hopefully we can have a little bit more robust discussion. Then traffic counter out this last month, two different locations. Excuse me, on Bundy Drive. In Lincoln, speed limit thirty, thirty-six miles was the eighth percentile. And on El Camino, I know this will be a shock. Sixteen hundred cars a day, forty-three and a thirty-five. I'm having. My discussions with Mally on the renewal, wants some great feedback on the those parameters that were included in the packet. And then as of nine sixteen, we're at ninety-one percent roughly on our tax collection for the year, so.
The rest usually comes in by.
Typically by the end of the month, we're on ninety-three and then you click off another percent or two in October and November and. We settle the county. Usually in the five percent range, I would say. Pretty accurate.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Wolf? An L I P O A report? They didn't send one? You have no public hearings? This is the first time for? Yeah, not the one. First opportunity for public comment. Name and address for the record and. Remorse keep to love three minutes. Anyone?
Right, but the dredging is, is. I talked to a couple of people up there and that are close to it and they said it, it's a bad man's thing. Take care of well in that area, so. It's I, I, I didn't get a chance to see where they're really dumping it at though. Where's that at? Set up on Lucky's?
Yeah, yeah, it's being pumped off site. Offsite and. I don't know what you described as, I guess as well as gravel pit is.
Yeah, he's, this is property. It's the other side of the bridge off of Rowland, so.
They are about halfway through by whether today. About halfway, they're at the island. The artificial island.
Alright, they're past the island now, are they?
No, they're just, they're just at. Okay. Anyone else?
Can't keep my mouse shut twenty-five years, I couldn't, so Charlie Keel eleven oh four Fairway Drive. I just want to encourage our community to really take a serious look at City Hall. We have looked at it, I have looked at it for twenty-some years and the positives are fantastic. It's gonna do things for Lake Isabella that we haven't been able to do before and be fair to the people. In Lake Isabella, so I hope you're part of an existing business who moves that forward. And then one other comment before you get to them is Kings Refuge. I don't think I've seen our community so clean. They do a fantastic job of picking stuff up. Even when you're gone, taking your dumpster back up to your garage. I mean, those guys are real servants to our community. And anything we can do, yeah, we're probably gonna have to raise the cost a little bit. We're still gonna be less than. That Union Township and Mount Pleasant and, and we're gonna be clean. And if it means going to a five-year contract, do it. Thank you.
What else? Okay, seeing none, existing business. Number eight. City Hall Incorporated, next step.
At last month's meeting, you asked that we hold a couple more community informational meetings. We did that Monday fifteenth. Or no, Monday the eighth and then Saturday the thirteenth. Both are fairly well attended. Had, had good questions each time. You know, the questions that we are continually seeing. You know, some of it. Are things that. I think just in general. Everybody needs, and I say everybody, I mean everybody in the local government, needs to do a better job on communicating so people understand. How property taxes are structured, what goes into how those are determined. You know, given the same, same comments every time and we have certain people that come again and again and. Are asking the same questions, like the answer hasn't changed any of those times, so. One of the, the people at the last meeting asked a great question, you know, why, what happens if we were to wait till the twenty forty census and. That's why I put in my report is it, you know, if you have to wait till the twenty forty census, because assuming you, you have a twenty thirty number that. Boxes you out on the density component. Realistically, you're not gonna have a census number until twenty forty-one. Which means it's a two-year process, so you're looking at twenty forty-three potentially in terms of when you would be able to go through with this. And if you were to game out the elections ahead in twenty-six and twenty-seven. You know, the difference in incorporating as a city and capturing that one additional mill beginning in twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Versus twenty forty-three. Is over one point seven million dollars if it could stay in our community. That, that's a lot of money to invest in roads, to invest in the lake, to invest in leasing if needed. To me, that, that would be my answer to that question because that really is the driving factor behind why we're looking to do this is. To go to two mills from one, so it's tax neutral in terms of what people pay, because they pay one mill to the township now. And just keeping those dollars in our community, to me, that seems pretty simple and pretty logical.
Anyone else?
Agreed. Been looking for a while, you know, trying to find something, a reason not to do it and I haven't heard a good point yet. You know, I understand all the reasons why. I think a lot of the. People who don't like it don't necessarily have all the facts, but.
Well, they're all online too.
Right.
All this stuff's online and we've had. One, two, five or six meetings, six I think, if you include the council meetings that we've had.
Yeah, I think at least six, yeah.
So, and we've been doing this for a long time, as Mr. Keel pointed out, we've been doing this for a long time. I think the timing is, it's the best timing we can have because. We won't meet the population dens- density in tw- twenty thirty. So now. You put it off. Because it will happen eventually.
One of the biggest concerns I've heard and they keep bringing back up is. If you turn into a city, we're going to have a police department. And they don't want a police department and I keep trying to tell them. There can be a police department if we're a village, it can be a police department if we're a city. It makes no difference. At the present time, we're not looking at. Having a police department of our own, we're looking at trying to keep either Mount Pleasant. Or. The sheriff's department to get back there, patrol back in here and do it. Now, the voters voted on it at one time, yes, we want police department, not police department, police present. So we did it. Not through our fault, but through the county, they cut back on us, so to me, that was the best deal we had. If we could have kept that deal, maybe made it one deputy. Every day. One shift and just change them around and that, we would have paid a little bit more, but I think that's our, was our best bet. But the county kind of messed us up on that, you know, and now we're sitting with the city and. We're working with the city. Kind of less hours in that, but we're working with them. And we continue to hope to do it that way by not having our own police department, but doing that. Now, as a last resort, there are people on the board that want to have. If we can't get the other. Then they wanna form our own, okay, as a last resort, not as first resort. So to me. This whole deal on the police, they don't understand, they just don't understand, nor some of them. Care to understand, they, they just don't want it. To me, I was the biggest opponent against this village. I had a pamphlet out, I talked to people, I knocked on doors, I did everything. Now here I am, sitting. And the city comes up. I see nothing wrong with it. I see we gained money. I don't see, if, if somebody out there. Can tell me what we're losing at it. I'd sure like to know because I do not see any. Thing against the city, I really don't.
Anyone else? Okay, so, well, before us lies that we need a motion to circulate petition and proceed, right?
Some motions should say.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, but what do you want to say?
To circulate petition and proceed with those, well, see your. Venture. Motion made by Latte to proceed with the city, the next step to City Hall, which is circulating petition. Seconded by Laraway. Further discussion? Let's have a roll call on this, please.
Yes, sir. Joe Latte.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
Brian Peavy.
Yes.
Carol Shannon.
Yes.
Terry Behringer.
Yes.
Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Dave Thomas.
Yes, seven zero unanimous. Okay, thank you. New business. Introduction to ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one refuse. Franchise. Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, so as we have discussed, Kings was likely a five-year renewal and I brought that to you last month and everybody seemed to think that was a very wise thing to lock to me, especially. Without there being a rate increase right off the bat as well. And looking at the ordinance that we have that governs our trash franchise structure. When we initially adopted it back in twenty eighteen, we put a cap in terms of the duration. So before you is a proposed amendment to that ordinance that would just remove that. That two or three-year cap that we were originally wrote into it. Since it is an ordinance amendment, it would need to be formally introduced by a member of the council and a hearing held at next month's meeting before you could take action.
Okay. Okay, so introduce the whistle Laraway. Is it a motion? But you're in favor. Because next, next month. This is just to introduce it, so, yeah, okay. So is that the?
That guy takes care of number two.
That also takes care of you, I was gonna say that.
So that would, and next month's meeting you'll have a public hearing on that and then you'll have under existing business, the contractual claims.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five eleven, master plan draft. What a master plan, it's great. Consider not develop the park.
Yeah, so the planning commission has submitted a draft for your consideration under Michigan's planning enabling law. Prior to a master plan draft being approved for distribution and public comment. Legislative body of the local unit of government must. Give its blessing to the document. Also, under Michigan law, the planning commission is the default. End approving entity unless the legislative body adopts a resolution asserting its authority to be the final adopting entity. In, in the past, we've, we've kind of gone both. This time I would recommend that it fall to the planning commission, simply for this reason. One of the key components in our master plan is the target market housing analysis, which we received a Michigan grant to do. There is a timeline and when we have to get this document approved to redeem our grant money from them, so. Not having an extra meeting to go through and jump those hoops to me makes sense to make sure that we can get that out in a timely manner and get our forty-five thousand dollars back. And so. The resolution would allow or approve the draft for distribution. There is a, a set of entities in the law that we have to send it to, like adjacent entities and utilities in the county and the regional planning commission and. So on and so forth.
So we, we're gonna. We have to pass this as a resolution so we can take it up next week?
No, so we can send it out for the sixty-three day public comment period, public comment, yep.
Carol entertained a motion. Moved by Behringer to accept resolution twenty twenty-five eleven, master plan draft.
A second.
Seconded by Latte. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Brian Peavy.
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Terry Behringer, yes. Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Joe Latte.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yes, motion carries, seven zero unanimous. Okay, yes, yourself. Cold water, you okay? Two thousand and one cold water digital sign discussion.
Yeah, so I, I will just say that Tony Bwin was probably the best. Base hitter in modern era baseball, he struck out every now and then and.
It was a little expensive.
It was substantially over our budget and more disappointing, even though the document clearly said accepting sealed proposals. One apparently read that, the other said in via email. And then we had a fourth email at seven o'clock on Friday asking if they could have more time. And it's like. Yeah. So.
So I think we better just, well, I know someone else has something to say. We probably have to go back to the drawing board on this.
Yeah, it was, it was well outside of the, the range. We were, we were looking, you know, realistically around thirty, I think, but. Forty percent more. I could, I could go back to them and see if they could do maybe a smaller digital type sign. This wasn't even that big. No, I don't, yeah. Not like we were asking for. That was, yeah, I know. It's almost like they didn't want it, but.
Well, even if we don't know. And relocated more towards. Traffic.
Yeah.
Your alternative spot, is there a light, so there's power there? Is there power in that other spot?
We need to run power about fifteen feet.
So I was looking at that.
There's, there's a, there, the outlet where we plug the Christmas lights in, it's right there, it just needs to come out a lot of that, so.
Think you can just spot some trees and.
Well, we were gonna cut down those two trees.
I was thinking for where our current sign is, so then you can see it coming the other way a lot better.
Yeah, we're gonna have to cut down a lot of trees, make that happen. Like all the trees we planted along the frontage on the vacant lot there. Then if we were to ever relocate, sort of purpose to block from the road. And, and the issue there with, with the beach, we really can't move it out much further towards the road. But.
Okay.
And the existing sign needs some, needs some TLC, it's why we haven't been using it a lot instead. Message board portion needs some. Some replacement, love to it, but. Yeah, you know, we were, we bid it out at twenty-four square feet, eight by three. Not huge by interest of the imagination. Yeah. The only thought I had is that they're all busy and they just spit high in case you want it, we'll do it, but otherwise. We're too busy. Well, one of, one of them came out and met with me for an hour. They brought a, a beautiful truck with a display of, of the size of the different millimeter, yeah. Yeah, they were. They were certainly very interested. Yeah, okay, okay. Well, we'll explore different things, but you're right. Yeah, I, I think we have to do something, just on the, the bidding. Not getting seal, a three sealed bids. Yeah, should. Send us back to the table. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Agenda number five under new businesses, resolution twenty twenty-five twelve, lake restoration fund. Loan.
So. We, we've talked about this in the past and have adopted a policy back in January in anticipation that this may occur. But as you know, we are using the tax money that is coming in right now on your twenty-five tax bill to pay for the work being done right now. And in looking at what we have received and what the final two invoices are going to be. Right now, we're just a little bit under. I think we'll get there or be really close, but in the event that. That last invoice is a thousand or two short in the fund. We need to approve a resolution that would allow the lake restoration fund to borrow from the general fund, which is legally allowed to do. I put it in, back to a C, ten thousand dollars, which is, and, and the reason I did that is you have to set an interest rate by law when you do this. So I, I looked at six-month CDs of varying amounts with Isabella Bank to get it as low of a rate as possible because. We are lending money from the general fund, but the purpose isn't for the general fund to make income, but legally you have to have, you know. Because this is viewed as an investment essentially, so. It's at two percent. This I could get with, you know, today's interest rate, so. And before we would need to do this, I would probably want the lake restoration committee to be the one to pull the trigger and say, yeah, we need to, to do it, so. But the council needs without the resolution, give them basically that authority for that final invoice.
Well, didn't Savin say that they were cool with, because they knew the kind of the, where we're getting our money from and the tax, we talk to them all the time. I understand. Sorry, but.
The, the agreement that we have has set dates for in-dollar amounts, with that last one being October thirty-first. You know, so we should be very close on October thirty-first to the, you know, the break-even point. We still have thirty-one thousand dollars to collect in that fund. You know, and right now we're a couple of grand short for October thirty-first. So. To me, to me, it's just a, a safety.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm not dragging you guys in for a meeting if I don't have to and.
Is it something that we would then rescind? Or you don't have to?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
Because it's specific in, in the resolution to the invoices for this project, like it has to be listed in the resolution what it's for, so. Once this project is overdone, it, it becomes a moot point at that time.
Okay.
So.
You mean the entire lake project?
Did, no, just, just this.
Yeah, just the one.
Just this chapter of it. This part of it. This step.
Well, this may or may not be.
It may not be needed. But it's better safe than sorry, is, is my. Yeah, and provide the safety information, we can pay the bill on time. Yeah.
Yeah, like you said, we knew that this was gonna be, it was gonna be tight because they have to be done dredging by drawdown.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
For our permit and we knew that we were gonna be.
So.
Really, really close, so.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make the motion to accept resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
Motion made by PV to accept resolution twenty-five dash twelve, lake restoration fund loan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Cuny. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carol Shannon, yes. Terry Behringer, yes. Paul Cuny.
Yes.
Joe Latte.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yes.
Brian Peavy.
Yes.
Dave Thomas.
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. Okay, second opportunity for public comments.
I had one, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, David, it's ten fourteen eighty-nine. Tim, what's the upfront cost, or the total cost to become a village and, or a city versus. First with the village and how much has been, you know, spent or allocated for that? You know, I, I gotta think during the research and everything else, there's been money spent already. And how much is left to spend to. You know, research and, and such to become a city. You know, is there numbers out there or?
It's something we. Well, we, we got the map updated.
Resident is tall.
The one cost that we did incur so far is because you have to have the map of the village outline. Or the city, the proposed city outline. Updated, but I think that's the only thing that's really costly, the thing that. Which we were going to do anyway because of the road situation. So. It, it's a cost you could contribute to that, but that's the only thing, other than just boots on the ground.
How much is left? How much is left, well, expense-wise, you know, to, to become the city?
It really depends on the elections, when you have the elections. That would be the expense moving forward.
So you're getting, if we have to have a special election, that's why we're pushing it along now, because there's, it isn't a special election. It's, it's during this election cycle. So it doesn't cost us, it will be on the ballot. With the red general election, along with that.
Yeah, you can automatically put it on the ballot and what's it take to get to there? It starts, you know, like with the lake dredging. You know, you put up a lot of pamphlets and a lot of, you know, brochures and communication, what, what's it gonna take to? Advance that?
Oh, to get.
Dollar-wise. You know.
I don't think, I think we haven't, we haven't talked about.
Well, that's why I was wondering, has that been discussed, is there a dollar amount or a set figure, just wing?
Right now, we're just trying to figure out. Because this is about a two-year process. And we're at the. Stage where we're just trying to get the petition together, so see if there's enough people that want to have it. And then it'll have to be certified and ratified. And we'll go from there. We don't have a cost on it yet.
Okay. I, I didn't know if you had a projection, that's why I was saying.
Yeah, I don't think there's. I don't think there's a lot of projected cost.
There's a lot of volunteers and.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's an important issue. I'm sorry, Maria Salinas, ten seventy-six El Camino Grande. I think that's a perfect issue is, you think you'd have some sort of a cost to present to the people for the court for the answer. And. And um, the other issue is the General Fund, how much is in the General Fund? You can look on the website and you can see for yourself anytime you want. Use computers, and that's another issue too, but alright, so I don't know what is the website.
I don't like it either, but I gotta use.
And I'm not, and I'm very computer literate either, you know. Yeah, that's right. So I, I guess I speak for the underdog, people that don't have computers are not at the age that can work a computer to get this information out there.
Well, you had, you had six meetings, ma'am.
I'm sorry, uh, so my issue is the General Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just a rough figure, which is a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, twenty thousand.
Tim, what is it?
I'm not asking for the exact amount. But when you're saying you're getting two percent at Isabelle's bank. I would think there would be something better out there, money, you know, government money market, try to get you at least four. If not four.
Well, yeah.
We're trying to keep it low so that we're not, not charging that project.
Right.
Okay.
No, I, no, I'm saying, aren't we trying to make our money grow as well to?
Well, the loan is from, the loan is from ourselves.
I'm sorry, connect and only listen to one.
The, the loan is from ourselves, okay? So we're taking money that the voters voted in to dredge the lake. We're gonna be a little short possibly, so we, we were gonna loan them the money to keep dredging or to pay the bills for dredging, okay? But we have to have something in place in case, let's say the, the bill comes in and it's a thousand dollars over, okay? We have to make that amendment to it and we have to charge an interest, it's a requirement. So we're trying to find the lowest interest because we don't want to charge for the services for our community. Yeah, we could find four percent, six percent, eight percent, but now all we're doing is taking it from our community. We don't want to do that and putting it in our General Fund, and the General Fund isn't there to make money. So that's why we're trying, trying to keep the interest rate as low as possible. That's why they did the two percent.
So the General Fund isn't to make money? I mean, they're help the community?
Right, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm not into, I'm not, I guess maybe I'm not explaining myself. I'm not asking about the interest rate or what we're, I'm asking about what are we doing to grow the money that's coming into the community?
One of the things we're trying to do.
How much of inter, in, interest rate are we getting? Two percent?
No, not on that.
Not even that?
We're gonna have to do a thumbnail sketch.
Well, don't you, Tim, don't you, when we do that, ask them, excuse my hearing, he fell off. The General Fund, we put money in bonds and stuff like that as we get money in to make money for the things. And we have different percentages and stuff like that, but you'd have to look at all the different bonds we have in there to do it, but so we do try to grow, yes, but when we talk about the lake reservation thing, we don't want to melt ahead with money there for the General Fund, because all we're doing is taking it from one fund and doing to another.
And it's required that they be separate in the budget, so therefore if you had to, you gotta move the money over here in order to pay the bills for that until we get the rest of the taxes.
And we're required by law to charge an interest, so that's why Tim tried to find the lowest possible.
Which is weird, yeah, but I'm just curious about the money that we're got to grow, you know?
Well, we do. We do put money in bonds and different things.
I'm just curious, is how much you're, you're getting from that? Just two percent?
varies from month to month.
And. So right now, we, we've pulled most of it out because we're doing a banking RFP, so as the CDs have matured, we've just been sitting on cash because if we move a financial institutions, we can't be locked in with an eighteen, you know, week CD or whatever, so we've got, I think, one or two CDs outstanding right now, but um, because we do have a banking RFP that is due end of the month. Um, potentially move from Isabelle Bank to maybe Mercantile. Um, Mercantile, our Lake Restoration Fund, we have that in money market account of them at five percent roughly, give or take. Um, so.
So that way we can make money, you know, we're changing bank possibly.
Because the taxes don't come in by the time the project is over.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Money markets are tied up for certain.
We're just trying to bridge that gap for a few days.
I just heard this two percent and I didn't understand it was, I didn't understand it was regarding interest, not so much, I mean, to pay a loan, not so much. I was curious as to how much our General Fund is growing, you know? I know money markets, those are tied up for, you know, X amount of months, you know, you can't move it around, I was getting that.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Garrel Prower, ten turns like you can, Ryan Ryan. Uh, question for Tim, I, I'm really confused, Tim, on how we're gonna get the amount of people. Uh, and you say we gotta have like a hundred and eighty-five more, two hundred more. I, I'm, I'm not understanding that. To, to become a city, we gotta have this or um, a beat, there, there was two plans you had. Um, one was a. You talking about population density?
Yes.
That's why we're doing it now rather than two thousand thirty? Census?
Yes.
You wanna go through that?
Sure.
I just don't quite understand it. I, I've been there quite a couple of these already and I, it just isn't sinking into me and I've read it on mine and, and I just, that's why I'm asking.
So, in our fair land of Michigan, oh, come on.
Yeah.
Get on the. We have fifth, fourth and home rule cities and fourth class cities don't exist anymore. Um, because in nineteen eighty, the legislature said, hey, you're all gonna be deemed home rule cities and we want you to adopt your own charter. Leaving fifth class and home rule as the two types of cities currently available to be incorporated in Michigan. They are identical in every aspect except two points. The population threshold, when you are, are incorporated. And if you are a fifth class city, you have to have at-large elections. So we have at-large right now, we don't have districts, so. I live on Bundy, I vote for the same people on council as you do on Canterbury and or, you know, Al Davis has on, on Bonanza or Avion. Um, we all vote for council at large. To be a fifth class city, when you incorporate, your population must be between seven hundred and fifty and two thousand. And if you are an incorporated village, you do not have to meet a density requirement. If you are over two thousand people. You're kicked up to be a home rule city. And you have to have a density of five hundred people per square mile. Our twenty twenty census, which we know missed roughly fifty homes, put us at one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine people. We've had another sixty homes built since then. Looking at the population projections from companies like Esri that we used in our master plan forecast. Were projected at the twenty thirty number or twenty thirty census to be just under twenty-two hundred. At four and a half square miles, times five hundred people. You have to have a density of twenty-two fifty at that time to incorporate as a fifth class city. So the reason why, one of the reasons we're working at this now is projecting that population out to a twenty thirty census, if it's two thousand one hundred and eighty. You're over two thousand, so you can't be a fifth class city. You're over two thousand, so you gotta go as a home rule city, but you don't meet the density requirement now based on our current geographic boundaries, so we would have to look at shrinking area, taking area out for that entire decade if you want to look at becoming a city based on that population, because everything, government loves to tie everything back to your census number. So once you get locked in at that number, you're, you're locked in for the next decade, so. That is, that is the, the population component of the discussion right there, so does that answer that for you, girl?
Quite good, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Rod, you're helping, hopefully soon to be at ten seventeen Peninsula Drive. Don't kill my back doing that. Um, I think Al brought up a good point. I, I think we need to know the cost of where it's gonna be, what the attorney fees are gonna be. Um, you know, what it's gonna cost to, we're gonna have to pay to change the signage. I think there's a lot of costs in becoming a, um, a fifth uh, city, or not, fifth city. The other thing that I think that's important that no one knows that if it passes, then we all, then we have a new election to elect new representatives, right? And then we decide, the council decides, and the amount of mills we would like to be able to assess if we ever want to assess them. Right now, a home rule city, our fifth great city, can assess up to ten mills. All right, we're thoughtful of the people, so the city council says, well, we'll have ten mills up there, we probably won't use them, but we'll have ten mills up there. That's, that's one thing I think people, people have to um, look for. And I, I have really looked, a village is our size or a little larger. Becoming a village to a city, and the only thing I can see where it's at all beneficial, if you want to get industry or industry in your, in your community, and I don't think we really want to do that because we had a chance to get a building down here where the bar is empty and we, and we have nothing there, um. I think, and then, and just one more thing, I've been in uh, politics for thirteen years, whenever I hear the term revenue neutral, I know my taxes are gonna go up. Most of the villages that became cities, they went up anywhere between three and five mills. And right now, the number one drive in killing things is property taxes, and I'm seeing that down at the state level, and we're trying to do something about it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Sure.
I'd be happy to respond.
Yes, thank you.
If we incorporate as a city. We have a tax cap in our charter right now of one mill. It's written into the village charter, section ten oh two, can't levy more than one mill. If you adopt the same charter and go from one mill to two, you're already paying one mill to the township right now for your operating millage. Keep that millage in your community. This is what your tax bill looks like. Between summer and winter, it's thirty point five nine three mills. Here's what you're currently paying. If you're on the Sherman Township side, it's thirty-one point zero nine nine. If you're on the Bruinfield side, where you're gonna be, and where I live, it's thirty point three seven. So locking in a tax gap in the charter has been a fundamental cornerstone part of this discussion since day one. The entire premise has been you are paying property taxes to your township and not receiving value for those dollars. We can do the assessing, we can hold your elections here, and we can do the border review here, we can collect and disperse for other entities and keep money in your community that we don't have to come back to you and say, we need more money for roads or we need more money for police. It's about getting your dollars to stay here and be spent in your community.
Exactly.
I, I just like to add one thing and correct me if I'm wrong. But let's just say for argument's sake, that we decided we wanted to have police protection, let's just say by the county of the land, okay? We have to go back to the taxpayers and ask them to vote and increase millage. Right now, we're staying neutral. Another example on the thing is the library in Sherman Township. Okay, if we pull out, there could be a problem with the, the library, okay? So we're tending to say, okay, if the library would go out, we're willing to put on the agenda, if you, the taxpayers, want the library in Sherman Township. You agree to a half mill or a full mill or whatever, whatever it is, you guys vote for it, so. Again, the library right now could be in problems if we become a, a city. But we're gonna go back to you guys to say, okay, when we become a city, you want the library to stay in there, then you vote on. Not us, you guys do it, so that's how it'll go up. And I know there's a lot of times that you move over to a city or something and they move their charter from, let's say they have one mill, and they automatically say, okay, if we start a city, we're gonna do it at five mills. We're not, we're staying at the one mill, uh, two mill, the one mill coming over from the townships. So we have to state it, it's ours, okay? So we're not gonna be paying anything to the townships, you won't pay anything to the townships anymore. Okay, we'll get the one mill because you're gonna keep us neutral by giving us one mill, you won't pay it over there, so it's a, a wash. Am I explaining it right?
No, I understand perfectly, but what I'm saying is if a board, new board comes in, just because the one mill or two mills right now, that doesn't mean that when they do a new charter for the home rule city, they can raise it whatever they want to.
And I. Let's just say that I, I just wanted.
Am I mistaken that when you become a city, you do a city charter?
Yeah.
Right, and you do that charter?
Right.
And that's where if you say you can raise ten mills, you can raise up to, you could put ten mills as your new charter.
You elect a charter commission first. Okay, that's the people in the community get to be on the charter commission.
They can stay.
What's they decide as the community is what can happen.
Yeah, but and here's the key thing on that one, Rogers, if, let's just say the committee says we're going to five, okay? When you guys vote for the city.
Vote it down.
You vote it down, you just vote it down because there's too much taxes.
Okay, we can't just change it and.
We can't change it, you have to vote in.
Your billing without your guys' approval a- as a whole. You know, that, that is a misunderstanding of.
I, that, that, I apologize, that was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, yeah, we can't.
I thought you voted for the city.
Yeah, no, we, we can't change that, that, that happened, I voted on it, it's a, you know.
My fault, I apologize.
I'm glad you asked you, it brings up a point that people are wondering.
That's, that's the biggest thing that we've been, we've been talking about is the fact that do you want that one mill to go to the township, or do you want to save it here? That's it.
And I'm gonna share a dirty secret with you, Roger. There is anybody in this room who likes paying property taxes, myself and my group, so.
I've been trying to figure out for years how to get uh, uh, to pay property tax.
Only sales tax, gas tax either.
Remember the lot thing?
I would, can I just?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I think one of, one of your comments was the, what, what you saw as the biggest advantage was drawing an industry, is that what you said?
Said what, I'm sorry.
For, for a city, you said something about.
You'd be given different DDA's and stuff like that, yes, yeah.
Um, I think, um, during Tim's, um, educational meetings on the thing, but they get, there's a couple of big voids due to our population and, and us being a community around a lake. And our roads, we don't really qualify for very much state support and no federal support for our local roads. Um, so due to how large we are, we have, um, a marathon, like twenty-six miles of roads. And so some of them, a few of them are major, which get a little more money, but the minor ones is a huge amount of where people live, and they get pennies basically, and I think the last time they did a really big um, upgrade on them, they had to ask for a big tax increase to do a project like we did with.
An assessment, an assessment.
Um, so one of the big draws, when we look at incorporating is not so much industry. It's trying to find where is money that's actually leaving our community to go be invested elsewhere. Is there a way we can pull it back so that we can kind of take care of our expensive road um, area? Um, so that's, I mean, like, that's one of our top of mind issues. And then as far as, I mean, we, the sheriff's department kind of got thrown at us recently, so that would be something else we have to figure out how we're going to fund um, patrols until we have, you know, two options versus just going to Mount Pleasant City to have extra, you know, security around the lake. Um, so that, that's just my comment.
You're gonna correct it. For us to make this next move. We have to take and get a hundred signatures.
Hmm?
Yeah, a hundred signatures. We've got eighteen hundred people in our community. Ten of us take petitions go around. We got a hundred signatures in an hour. So the cost there, minimal, then it goes to the state and takes forever for them to come back with something to say. Okay, you can vote on. Then it goes to a vote. Which is gonna come at a time when it's state election or something like that, so there's no cost there. So we've got a few sheets of paper for signatures, we're doing that. And it's gotta go through that election. And then we talk about, okay, do we want to change our charter? We did that just a couple of years ago, we voted on it. It was just a couple of little changes. We can use the same charter, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, we could use the same charter. Now, maybe some of us want to sit on a committee and say, no, I'd like to change that we got a little bit more here, do something there, but it, it's gonna be real minor stuff, because we like what we do. A little bit more here, do something there, but it, it's gonna be real minor stuff, cause we like what we do, we got right now. We don't wanna change a lot, and if we like those guys, we'll elect them again. If we got somebody else over here that wants to run, we can elect them. That's all the elections it's gonna take, isn't it?
Let the turner commission.
Yes.
And they decide on the turner.
And so, I mean, it's not a huge expense, now do we change the sign from village like Isabel to, to city, yeah, okay. Al, you're nice, if we can paint that on there, we're not too good at it, but we can do it, so it's not a huge expense, guys. Not that I see anyhow, I didn't see it in twenty-five years, so I still don't see it, but.
It's out of time.
It's not like we have road money to buy signs on it.
Yeah. That's a lot of very up and.
Yep, I got a question.
Name?
Ruben Salinas.
Yep.
In seven-six El Camino Grande. The, the young man had said, that, you know, it takes a hundred fo- uh, vote to pass it, right? And Ron, put a, a petition, go get a hundred signatures. So, what happened to, uh, you, they got a hundred, but then you got a hundred fifty-six, no. Do you still say yes?
That's what the vote is for, then the vote would come.
No, no, that's only to get it on, Ruben, that's not, that's not the vote of the people, that only comes out to the vote of the people.
Okay, that's what I wanna know.
You get to vote on everything.
Say no, and then, if you got a hundred, it'll go through. Same thing as if I wanted to run for village council, I could come around and get a petition and get it signed by enough people, say, yeah, I'll put his name on the ballot. That's all, then you can vote for me or not, same thing for me, I'm gonna say, it's gonna come through an election, we all go in, yeah.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah, this shows interest, yes.
So all we're trying to do is get it out there, to the people, so then they can vote. We could go through this whole thing, and if enough people said no, it's down. And, you know, we can't go any farther, the people have to vote on it.
Garret Prover, ten-three one, that's the whole thing, you, and, and you're right, you go to an annual meeting, go to your meetings here. And you look how many people show up.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, this is the whole thing, how many people are really concerned about it. You're not, you know, you could, somehow, there's gotta be another way to where, we can get to the people, because. You know, there, the last meeting I come to here, that's most people I'd see heading along.
Right.
I mean, there are probably fifty people in here.
Yeah, we'd love to have a full house every meeting. Cause that's what we're supposed to be doing, representing what's best for all the community members, so. You know, unfortunately, we have limited feedback from, you know, the community, because, you know. Um, you know, we, we would love more, for sure, you know, um, you know, I, I don't think many of us would disagree, uh, you know, it'd be nice to have a full house and get input from. From you guys, so that we can better serve you, you know, we are, we are, you know, trying to look up with the interest of the majority of the people in the community and. You know, that doesn't always work, you know, as with anything in life, but, you know, we, we're doing our best, so if you get people to come here, you know, uh. And give us input, we, we would love it, you know?
Yeah, so we're, we'd love to have people come in here and tell us why they don't want, okay? Give us the reason so we can answer it, or we can look and say, well, we never looked at that. But, for people to say they don't want it and not come in here and talk to us, i- it's, it's kinda crazy. If you don't like it, tell us and let us figure it out, let us either answer your question. Or research it, but we can't do it if they don't come to the meeting.
And the chairman, Mr. Hop, can also attest to this, it's supposed to be cumbersome and slow.
Yes.
It's supposed to be slow like it is right now, it's supposed to be.
Sometimes I think the state is too slow.
You guys are listening.
Yeah.
We'll admit that. Cause we don't take vacation.
How's that bunch coming, sir?
Got a question for Tim? Okay, Tim, one more question for you. I mean.
Listen, hey, what happened to the sign? I used to love that sign there, what happened to it?
Street, I'm a sign, we, we move it around. Next time we move it, I'll put it in front of your house.
No, but next time, put it at the other side when they, they come faster from the other side.
But it's a ring for your house. Mark the irrigation, just wanna make sure I hit that when I'm putting it in.
I turned the other day and I looked that way, nothing, and I took my time and, Jesus Christ, I, whoa.
We got down in Flumhouse right now, down at the far end, uh, we had.
I saw, I thought you had two.
We got two.
We do too.
Yeah, we did, so.
We're down a lot of roads.
You heard that, right?
Anyone else? Okay, public comment, votes, council comments, anybody?
Well, I wanna thank everyone for coming, it, again, it would be lovely if you all would come every meeting. Because you have ideas we haven't thought of, and not just about cityhood, about everything. I mean, this is not an easy job, it takes a lot of hours to do this work for you all, we'd like input, it'd be lovely.
So if you can each bring one new person each meeting, that'd be awesome, you know?
We turn this into AM way?
Yeah.
Seriously, thank you very much for, yeah, it's very good to have people. Give their opinions.
Just make sure the residents.
Yeah.
Okay, announcements.
Lake Mission's next meeting is right now scheduled for October fourteenth, your next meeting is scheduled for October the twenty-first.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order?